Good evening and calling the meeting to order, welcome to the West Hartford Public Schools' Regular Board of Education Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March the 18th, 2025. Charlotte, may you please call the roll?
Mr. Gagnon.
Here.
Mr. Goldman.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Mariman.
Here.
Mrs. Nazarella.
Present.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson.
Here.
Mrs. Jagaloff.
Present.
Student Representative Sarah Granquist.
Here.
And Student Representative Alexis Nguyen.
Here.
Thank you so much. And Alexis, may you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have a revision to the agenda order, and now it is time for public communications. This is an opportunity where we're able to hear from you, your thoughts, your questions, your suggestions, and your concerns. Each individual is allowed three minutes to speak. We ask when you come to the podium to please share your name and your town of residence. Also, please be mindful of Charlotte, who will hold up a yellow card when you have one minute remaining in your time, and a red card when your time has expired. And we ask for you please to conclude your thought and respectfully take your seat at that time. Please be mindful that we are attentively listening to what is being shared. However, it is policy that we do not respond to comments as they are being made. We are receiving comments on both agenda and non-agenda items. However, we are going to start with those who are speaking on agenda items. And for our awareness, the agenda for this evening includes: Proposed calendar for the 2026-2027 school year as a second reading, multi-year enrollments, early childhood play-based learning, and approval of minutes from March 4th, 2025 Board of Education meeting. I have a list here with no one that has signed up to speak on an agenda item, but I will ask if there's anyone here who desires to speak on an agenda item. Seeing none, we'll proceed to the list of those speaking on general comments. And first we have, and I will say from the beginning, I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name, please charge it to my head and not my heart. We first have Libby Greenblatt. Libby.
My name is Libby Greenblatt, and I live in West Hartford. Good evening, Board members, superintendent, and faculty. My name is Libby Greenblatt, and my husband Aaron and I are proud graduates of the West Hartford Public Schools and the parents of two amazing children, a third grader at Aiken and a preschooler who will be, enter the district in two years. Our respective educational experience in the school system was a driving force in our decision to leave New York City and return home to raise our family. In thinking about next year, we are deeply concerned about the proposed class sizes at Aiken and other schools in the district. Last year, a fourth section of second grade was added at Aiken due to increased enrollment. Therefore, for the last two years, my daughter and her amazing classmates and teachers have experienced the benefit and joy of smaller class sizes, around eighteen to twenty per class. As it stands right now, class sizes amongst the fourth grade throughout town will range from eighteen kids per class at Smith, twenty-six kids per class at Aiken and Whiting Lane, and twenty-seven kids in each fourth grade class at Brayburn and Webb Hill. This is unacceptable and unprecedented in a town like West Hartford. When I told my daughter about how many kids will likely be in her fourth grade class next year, she remarked, "Mom, how could any adult think this is a good idea?" Historically, kids are supposed to learn how to read from kindergarten to third grade, and in fourth grade, the expectation shifts to reading to learn. I volunteer weekly in my daughter's classroom, and I can attest to the fact that there are still many children who are learning how to read. Across Connecticut, fifty-four percent of children are not reading at grade level. If all children have the right to become proficient readers, it seems unrealistic to think that a teacher with a class of twenty-six to twenty-seven, fourth or fifth grade students will also be able to remediate below-grade-level reading skills. This is an unreasonable expectation of our hard-working educators and also seems unfair to our children, particularly those who are neurodivergent. In speaking of Aiken, we have the best principal, faculty, and staff. They can only do their job well when they are given the support to be successful. Large class sizes and high caseloads are not supportive of their job satisfaction and student outcomes. I want these wonderful humans, especially our special educators, to stay in West Hartford. Our kids cannot afford to lose them. In conclusion, I ask you all to please do what is right for our children. Please consider keeping class size limits in fourth and fifth grade the same as you do in kindergarten to grade three, which is no more than twenty-three students per class. Our COVID kids, our soon-to-be fourth and fifth graders desperately need smaller class sizes to close the academic and social-emotional gaps that were a product of missed instruction and socialization from preschool to kindergarten. If you truly believe in every student, every day, with no limits, you will consider flexibility with your class-size guidelines for our fourth and fifth grades. Please do not prioritize cutting the budget and having the lowest per pupil expenditure in our DRG over the welfare of our children and teachers. Thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Next, we have Erin Greenblatt.
Good evening, Board members, educators, and everyone else. My name is Erin Greenblatt. I live in West Hartford. I was born and raised here. I'm a proud graduate of the West Hartford Public School System, Norfeld Elementary School, King Philip Middle School, and Hall High School. I take a lot of pride in being from West Hartford, growing up here and making the decision to, with my wife, to move back here and raise our family here. And much of that pride comes from the experiences that I had going through the public schools here. West Hartford Public Schools have always been regarded as an exceptional system, and I credit a lot of my personal success to having gone through that. By all accounts, our town is thriving. Just two weeks ago, Mayor Cantor delivered the state of the town address. She touted the strength of the residential real estate market, the town's diversity, multiple current, ongoing developments, amongst other things. Even with everything else that's going on in town, our public schools and its children are the foundation of West Hartford's success, both past, current, and future. I believe that the school system is the main driver in attracting new families to our community and retaining existing residents. Obviously, I'm now a father of two children, and I have a completely different perspective than I did when I was going through the school system. I try and remain as active as possible. My wife volunteers on a weekly basis, and I attend any event that I can. I'm starting to observe some serious concerns and changes that cause me concern for the future of our school system, and the main issue is the size of the classrooms. Section 6250 of the school board policy provides the guidelines for school sizes. It says on our website that that policy was established in 1988. I was seven years old when that policy was established. I hope we can all agree that our society, our town, and the complexity of education have changed since then. If the board members have not done so already or have not, or don't do so regularly, I would urge you guys to attend some of our schools and observe what's going on there. Our daughter's classroom currently has twenty kids in it, which is a decent size. The level of activity throughout the day is, it's a spectacle in there, in the classroom. Nine out of twenty of those kids, including my daughter, have identified issues, either educational or behavioral, and others likely have unidentified issues. Throughout the day, students are being pulled in and out for services. Service providers come in and out at varying intervals, and there's, you know, just the teachers keeping track of everything is a full-time job, let alone the education that they're supposed to be provided. This is not the kind of level of activity that existed back in 1988 when these guidelines were established. I would urge you guys to, again, observe what's going on in the schools and act accordingly. We can't have kids in fourth and fifth grade on a one-to-twenty-six ratio, one-to-twenty-seven. It's just unacceptable. You know, our children deserve better. Our teachers who work at the school deserve better, and as parents, we demand better from the town. So I hope you guys can reconsider and try and find a way to make those class sizes smaller. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sabrina Bowler.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sabrina Bowler. I'm a parent of a sixth grader at King Philip Middle School, a third grade daughter, and a first grade son at Aiken Elementary School. I serve on both PTO boards at King Philip and Aiken Elementary School. I was once a teacher in a past life, and I still feel a deep connection to the educational system. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the proposal to increase class sizes. This cap that was set, however, many years ago, we are living in a very different world now. Our children have very different needs than ever before. Since this cap was put in, you know, place, our students have suffered from pandemic learning loss. They are, there's a rise in mental health issues, and now is not the time to pack more students into each classroom. The children currently in grades three, four, and five began their schooling in the midst of a pandemic. They learned the fundamentals of reading, writing, and socializing, wearing masks and keeping a distance in an environment that was anything but typical. As a result, many of them still require intervention to close those learning gaps that continue to widen. Yet, we do not have enough staff to provide these critical services. Teachers are already stretched far too thin, working tirelessly to support students' academic and social-emotional needs. Now, we're asking them to do even more, manage larger classes, differentiate instruction, and address individual learning challenges, all without any additional support. How can we expect them to do this effectively? And if we're increasing their workload, are we increasing their compensation as well? Teacher burnout is real. This concern is not only, this concern is only going to grow. West Hartford is an expanding community, and enrollment will continue to increase. We also need to consider the number of students who enter the district throughout the year. A classroom that starts at twenty-four in September can easily grow to twenty-six. That is an unsustainable number, both for teachers and for students who need individualized attention. The research is clear, and it's available to everyone. Smaller class sizes boost learning. We are incredibly fortunate to have such talented and dedicated educators in West Hartford, but we cannot take them for granted. Increasing class size will only push more of them to their breaking point, and when we lose great teachers, it's our children who suffer the most. If we truly value the quality of our education, we need to prioritize reasonable class sizes, adequate staffing, and the support our students and teachers deserve. I acknowledge that fiscal responsibility is important. However, I'm asking each of you to keep our children at the center of all financial decisions you make. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Siegel. Nicole, pardon me, I apologize. Pardon me, Nicole.
Hi, good evening. My name is Nicole Siegel, and I live in West Hartford. I am speaking to all of you as not only a parent, but as a seasoned teacher herself with almost twenty years' experience working in elementary schools. I have two children that are in West Hartford Public Schools, one at King Philip and one at Aiken. My younger child is currently in third grade at Aiken, where there are four classes, but given the plan for the next school year budget, will drop down to three classes, which would make each fourth grade class have a total of twenty-six students. There are so many positive things to share about West Hartford Public Schools. The schools are actually one of the main reasons I personally chose to move to this town. I can truly say that living here has not only met, but exceeded, all of my expectations in many ways in regards to education. Both of my children have been incredibly successful in school, and I believe there are many reasons for that. The leadership, like our principal at Aiken and at KP, is a part of that, and I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the teachers. We have really had the most positive experiences with both of our children's teachers in Aiken and now at KP. It's been lovely to see the growth and independence that both of my boys have displayed as the years have gone by, and I credit the amazing staff and educators for that. Every teacher has made them feel safe and valued each and every day. With all of this said, studies do show that the number-one factor in improving student achievement is having smaller class sizes. When a teacher has less students, they're able to devote more time to each individual student. It is essential for teachers to have a great rapport with the student, and with a smaller class size, they can actually meet all students' social-emotional needs. I have a very deep concern over the class sizes for next year, and I'm truly worried about the ramifications for our children for years to come. By adding an additional six or more kids per classroom and eliminating a teacher, I want everyone to truly take a moment and think about how that teacher is able to meet all of the needs of each student with such a large class. Don't we really just want our students to feel safe and emotionally secure? This is something that we are taking away from our children by making class sizes this large. I am keenly aware of all that goes into a school day as a classroom teacher myself, like needing to support academic and behavioral challenges and differentiating instruction for each child. So by adding additional students to these classes, these needs will not be able to be met in the same capacity, and it will be detrimental to our children. Let's not also forget about the physical complications that will take place with the given space, with the class size as large as twenty-six will cause. So I really just ask the board and everyone to please reconsider this plan with the budget and immediately reconsider this important decision regarding our children of this amazing town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Heather Sansone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Sansone. I'm a West Hartford resident and the proud parent of two Smith STEM School students. West Hartford is a wonderful place to live, but it is also an expensive place to live. Our town has one of the highest median property tax rates in the state, and the fourteen-and-a-half-million-dollar budget increase proposed to maintain the school system will raise the taxes even more. My husband and I view this financial burden as the trade-off for a high-quality education for our children, but there is a caveat to it when it comes with the loss of teacher positions and increased class sizes. It is realistic to say that this high-quality education will be able to be maintained when a teacher may now see eight to ten more elementary students in the room. What about the increase in the number of students on IEPs and 504s? My son has an IEP, and I cannot fathom how all of the individual accommodations each one of these students may require can be met, along with the general needs of all students when there are twenty-seven of them in the room. How does this ensure every child is fully accessing their education? How does this ensure that we do not lose high-quality teachers to other districts due to burnout? The system is only as good as the teachers willing to work in it. Our district proudly touts its vision of the graduate as the aspirations held for each student. Problem-solving and creativity is one of the facets that the district aims to instill in all students, and it seems the budget concerns for the coming year might benefit from some innovative approaches to solving problems. Two years ago, I spoke out against the consolidation of the STEM curriculum specialist job with the full-time science lab job, and this year, that is exactly what was done despite public outcry. This is frustrating, and I think it is long overdue to see some creative consolidation of roles at the town level. Why are there so many department heads, curriculum developers, and other administrators? How do you justify those roles to taxpayers at the expense How do you justify those roles to taxpayers at the expense of the teacher roles? I can tell you I did not move here because the administration is so great. Last year, the justification for assistant principal roles at the elementary schools was to free up the principals to be able to focus more on curriculum development. So what is the justification for maintaining the town-level ones? I am respectfully urging all of you to take a hard look at this system objectively and ask yourselves, why is it so easy to eliminate jobs of those who have direct contact with students, but not those that sit at a higher salary base with minimal student contact? What roles truly make the most impact in a child's education? Anyone with children knows that working with adults is way less taxing than 27, 10-year-olds. We can administrate the best curriculum known to man, but it is only as good as the ability to effectively implement it. I hope you will vote no and send a message that it's time to prioritize teachers over administrators. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Ruby Diaz.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Ruby, and I am a concerned parent of a third grader at Smith STEM School and a West Hartford resident. And I'm here to urge you to reconsider the proposed budget cuts that will disproportionately impact our teachers and our students. We all recognize the need for fiscal responsibility, but when making these difficult decisions, we must ask, who will be the most affected? Unfortunately, the current proposal shifts the burden onto the very individuals who made the greatest impact on student learning, our educators. At the cost of losing quality educators, our district remains top-heavy with about at least 34 FTE positions dedicated to administrative and supervisory roles, not including principals and assistant principals who interact directly with students. These positions totaling millions of dollars and six-figure salaries have minimal personal touchpoints with students. This figure also does not include curriculum specialists who are housed at Town Hall assisting with oversight in various content areas, despite the fact that we replaced 11 of our building-based curriculum specialists with assistant principals to empower our principals to take a more prominent role in curriculum development. The classroom is where education happens, not the central office. I'm concerned by this pattern that looks to the classroom as the first place to cut. It's true that we have some of the brightest, most dedicated teachers in West Hartford. It's also true that every day, teachers are juggling a diverse set of needs within each classroom, balancing different personalities, learning styles, IEP accommodations, behavioral challenges, and the unique social-emotional needs of every student, all while striving to deliver high-quality instruction. I recognize that at face value, the proposed cut of five elementary classrooms from the current level seems reasonable, given the anticipated enrollment and existing class-size limits. However, numbers don't tell the whole story. Every classroom has unique learning needs that also need to be considered. In healthcare, we call this acuity. Giving a nurse three stable patients on the floor is not the same as giving them three patients in the ICU. I've stood at this podium before, first to advocate against consolidating the STEM specialist position at Smith STEM. We were successful only to have her position cut the next year. And last year, I stood here to advocate for keeping our family and community engagement coordinator. We celebrated when the board chose to maintain her, only to move her to central office in the fall, away from the families whom she supported day in and day out within our school building. This was really disappointing. There is a lot of talk in our town about finding equitable solutions to problems. With teachers and student support staff facing budget cuts, how does the district justify the continued funding of such a vast administrative body if their impact on student success is unclear? Could some of these funds be better implemented at the classroom level where equity is directly experienced? Our children don't need more oversight, they need more educators. And I urge you to reevaluate the proposed cuts and prioritize the needs of students in our classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gary Brown.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Gary Brown. I own a psychotherapy practice in town, and my wife is a registered nurse at St. Francis Healthcare. Her and our two daughters are here tonight. I came to speak about Quest, but I did want to say a word, just a salute and support for everybody that's spoken tonight. I feel so compelled by what you've all shared. My older daughter Vivian just leaned over to me and said that her classroom size at Norfelt School in the fourth grade is currently 18 students. She says it's crazy the way it is, and I can't imagine it being any bigger. I did, as I said, come to speak about Quest. I'm the father of two young girls, 10, Vivian is 10, and my daughter Beatrice is seven. And we moved to West Hartford from Oregon on the west coast a couple of years ago now. We moved here in large part for the quality of the schools. And I can say gladly that we've been affirmed in that choice multiple times. And no better example of that has been our oldest daughter's experience with the Quest program at Norfelt School or in the West Hartford Public School District. She talks about school with, about Quest days in particular. Her face lights up. She's so enthusiastic about what she's working upon, about the chance, the sense of belonging she feels with the community of learners that she's in, in the Quest classroom, the sense of engagement and how she is challenged by her Quest teacher, Teresa Corsi. She shares with pride the projects that she's working on. She surprises us with her abilities. She's a growing mathematician and emerging artist and a voracious reader. And at Quest, you know, I don't, my wife and I, we don't have a need for her to be, for either of our daughters, to do anything in particular, really. We just want them to be joyful and have meaning in their lives and to become who they are. And when our daughter is at Quest, I know that's happening. And so I hope that you will support the full Quest budget for this coming school year, that you won't reduce it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is all who I have signed up on a list here. However, we'll extend to the audience anyone who may want to make a public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? I'll ask again. Seeing none, we shall pause on public communications. Now, moving on to non-staff communications and reports. This is where we're able to hear from our students what is happening at their respective schools. So Sarah, may you please share with us what is going on at Hall?
This week is the start of our famous pops and jazz performances. The singers, dancers, musicians, and actors have been working tirelessly through their eight-hour rehearsal days to prepare for this production. There will be student viewing performances during the day on Friday, as well as a sensory-friendly performance Thursday afternoon. This weekend, we look forward to performances on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at 7:00 p.m., as well as a matinee show on Sunday at 1:00 p.m. Next week, there will be shows on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at 7:00 p.m. You may have also seen some Pops and Jazz cast members on WFSB Channel 3 at 3:00 p.m. today. We encourage everyone to purchase tickets at pnj.ludus.com and see this amazing performance and support the hard work of all of our performers and faculty. Over on the academic side, we have our school-administered SAT this Thursday for all juniors. Their teachers have been working to prepare them for this exam, and we wish all of our students the best of luck on Thursday. In preparation for the SAT, the Hall and Connerd Counseling Departments have been holding the SAT Power Prep Program after school on Wednesdays. This program is open to any junior and provides guidance in studying and preparing for the SAT. On March 24th through the 26th, we will be welcoming NIOSC to our school for their follow-up accreditation visit. We are excited to show NIOSC all of the amazing activities, events, and achievements we have at Hall, and NIOSC will hear about life at Hall from both faculty and students. Our winter sports seasons have all come to a close, and spring sports are starting up this week. Both our girls' and boys' hockey teams made it to the quarterfinals in their championship games, and we are very proud of all of our athletes. Two of our girls' hockey athletes, Teagan Cohane and Lauren Bucy, earned All-State honors. The boys' swim and dive team had their state championship meet yesterday and came in fifth overall with many individual event placements. A special shout-out to Jack Ackerman, Quinn O'Neill, Yerin Konterovic, and Cyrus Zhu for earning All-State honors. Mike Ortiz, a Hall wrestling athlete, was also awarded All-State honors. We also have a few shout-outs for our coaches. Coach Billings was named the CHSCA Coach of the Year for Indoor Track, and Coach Jenny Mancini was named Assistant Coach of the Year for Girls Hockey. Congratulations to all of our Hall titans for the amazing achievements, and we look forward to a busy and exciting next few weeks.
Thank you, Sarah. Alexis, please share what is going on at Connerd.
Hi, everyone, and happy almost spring. There's plenty to share about Connerd's events this month. Our Winter Musical Disaster had their final performance on Saturday. We are so proud of our talented actors and actresses, and would like to extend a huge thank you to everyone involved with the show, whether it was behind the scenes or on stage. Our improv troupe, Parachute, will be hosting another show in the Black Box on March 27th at 6:30 p.m. And additionally, the Music Month Concert by our band will be on March 20th at 7:30 p.m. in the auditorium, so definitely go check it out. And to add on to that, Unified Theater just started back up again yesterday, and we're really excited to see what everyone has to come up with. Our pep rally for Unified Sports, sponsored by ESPN, will take place on March 28th. Thank you to Ms. Heather Russell, Tracy Kelly, and Lisa Daly, the Department Supervisor for PE and Health, as well as the Special Olympics in ESPN. We also want to thank Ms. Kelly Casey, Ms. Meg Sersamo, and Mr. Sikorski for their help and support for the event. In honor of World Down Syndrome Day this Friday, March 21st, Senior Kaitlyn Farrell put together a fantastic fundraiser. We will be showing our fun socks by wearing them to school, and we'll be selling bracelets during lunch waves. Show your support by rocking these socks and bracelets. Connerd is collaborating with Rise Up Again to create another beautiful mural. We will be working on one for the back of our school, and students from NHS and other clubs will be supporting the mural. Thank you to Mrs. Lindsay Tringali, who is leading the project. We'd like to remind parents that Connerd tours are happening for anyone interested in visiting the school during the summer. If you're looking for specific details, there should be an email from Mrs. Tambora Noble, but do not hesitate to reach out. In our sports world, we have some exciting things happening. From the girls' indoor track team, runners Liv Sherry, Tess Sherry, Annabelle Tracy, and Hazel Montanari competed at the New Balance Nationals this past weekend. Additionally, our boys' swim and dive team will be attending state opens this weekend at Yale University. After winning last night against New Milford, our boys' hockey team will be returning to the state championship to face Joel Barlow at Quinnipiac this Saturday at 1:00 p.m. We wish them lots of good luck and are hoping to bring home some hardware yet again. Lastly, we are so excited for spring sports to start on Saturday. Registration will close this week, so if you have not registered, please go to westhartfordathletics.org to do so as soon as possible. You won't be able to participate on Saturday without registering. And like Sarah said, this Thursday, juniors will be taking the SATs during periods one through three. All of their students should follow their regular schedules that have been adjusted to account for the testing period. Juniors, make sure you check your school email for details on your test room assignment, and thank you to Mr. Fisk for organizing this SAT day. Today, a select group of students from our AP Chemistry classes attended the Chemistry Olympiad, and Connerd's math team finished top five in CAML out of 25 schools. They will be attending the state match on April 1st. Congratulations to these students on their amazing achievements. And then just to relay some college announcements, on March 21st, there will be a Community College Application Day in the Career Center at 9:00 a.m. On March 25th, college financial planning will take place in the auditorium at 6:30 p.m. And for students, there will be an options fair in the library during school on March 27th. We'd also like to thank all of the teachers who helped out seniors by writing recommendation letters. We appreciate the effort that you put into helping us succeed. Lastly, the work-based learning efforts continue to align with community partners as we build career awareness and exploration opportunities. This spring, we will see our largest group of student intern placements and job shadow participants. In April, we'll see over 20 students participate in job shadows at West Hartford's Triumph Engine Control Systems, which is a local aerospace firm looking to help WHPS expand beyond the classroom.
Woo, all right, Alexis, thank you, and thank you, Sarah. Lots going on at Hall and Connerd. Thank you both so much. You represent your schools well. Now, moving on to unfinished business, where we have proposed calendar for the 2026-2027 school year as a second reading. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education review as a second and final reading the proposed calendar for the 2026-2027 school year. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Shannon. Discussion. Our superintendent, Mr. Visinas, to you.
Thank you very much. So on page two of your booklets, you will see the 2026-2027 proposed school calendar. It is unchanged from our last discussion that we had at the last Board of Education meeting. And at that time, there were no proposed revisions to it. So I'm really here to just answer any questions that you might have and any further discussion you'd like to have before voting on this calendar.
Thank you very much. Teammates, any questions or concerns? Again, this is our second reading, and as Mr. Visinas shared, there were no concerns raised the first time. Are there any concerns or comments at this time? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. With the motion on the floor, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business, which we do not have any of, but we do have staff communications and reports. So passing it on to Mr. Visinas for our superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. And I'll second the early spring. Welcome to early spring. March brings not only Women's History Month, St. Patrick's Day, we most recently celebrated, World Down Syndrome Day, and School Day SAT. So very excited for all of those things for our students. One of my favorite things that does occur around this time of year, however, is the art beat, the annual art beat celebration, which kicked off and runs March 12th through the 30th. I was there a little bit late at the opening, and I was just in awe of the talents of our students, K through 12, with the art that's showcased for families, for staff, and the community. And then alongside, if you didn't get out to see it, alongside the program, there were students outside that were selling handmade pottery in support of the Empty Bowls fundraiser, which is a program to help with food scarcity. As I said, this showcase will be up throughout the entirety of the month at the Saltbox and Clubhouse Galleries, and I would strongly encourage anyone from the board, anyone from the listening public that hasn't made it out there to go enjoy. Shout-out to Norfelt Elementary, who hosted Junior Achievement Day last month with a cadre of wonderful community volunteers who came in and supported lessons and activities relating to financial literacy. And there's certainly no, there's no such thing as starting too early when we think about that topic. Under the topic kind of operations, I did want to let the board know that our Strive program will be temporarily relocating from the American School for the Deaf Campus to the Boys and Girls Club of Hartford. This is based on the ASD Building, having some persistent roof issues necessitating the move. So all of the staff and the students from reports that I've received are actually very excited about the new space that they'll be occupying. And there's ongoing communication with the families. Transportation and all of the logistics are being coordinated, but wanted to provide you some visibility with that. Under curriculum updates, certainly I wanted to share, you have a handout there regarding the America 250 Project. We've been talking a little bit about that and want to just kind of keep it on your radar. But you can read a little bit more about what the town at large is planning and the school's role within that. And we're hoping to be able to support the themes that Connecticut is hosting, telling inclusive stories, the power of place, doing history, and looking at things from the lens of for the common good. I also wanted to make an announcement that we've recently partnered with Project Shema to host an antisemitism education workshop upcoming in the month of April. This will be an assured professional learning experience that will engage all of our principals on staff, as well as district leaders and the EDC members at the schools, teacher volunteers who are on that committee, to further develop their understandings and their skills to navigate difficult conversations in and around antisemitism. We've got some great shout-outs to our Pupil Services Department, namely our Deaf and Hard of Hearing Community, who were recently celebrated at a community fun night hosted at Morley Elementary. Families and students engaged with each other and school officials and their service providers in an evening activities and crafts. And families, you know, gave a lot of positive feedback about the camaraderie and the networking opportunities that were available to them. On that note, just a heads up that April will be Autism Awareness Month, and our Pupil Services Department is looking forward to a kindness campaign to celebrate our students. Under governance and policy, I did want to share that the Connecticut General Assembly is expected to debate and vote on Bill 1511, an Act Concerning Disconnected Youth. This is a bill we heard a little bit about at one of our Board of Education workshops relating to significant changes planned for the educational cost sharing. relating to significant changes planned for the educational cost-sharing formula. Ultimately, it's intended to provide a greater level of funding to districts and towns. And one of the major tenets of the bill, there are several, but one of the major tenets of the bill is to add students with disabilities as a weight into the formula, as well as others. And there's a little bit more detail that I've provided in the written copy of my notes to you and a link where you can go and read the full language of the bill. It was mentioned, March 28th, we're looking forward to that celebration, for our banner celebration for Unified Sports at our schools. I know I've been hitting that one every meeting. The board and the Town Council, as you know, are collaborating to present installments, number two and number three of our community conversations regarding the budget. Those will take place in the morning of the 31st at the Faxton Library, and in the evening at the Noah Webster Library. Leave those start times are 8:45 and 6:00 p.m. respectively. And then a quick personal shout-out to one of our principals, Jen Derrick of Norfel Elementary, on becoming a grandmother this weekend. So, that is what is exciting and happening in our schools. Open to any of your questions.
Thank you very much. Teammates, any questions or comments regarding our superintendent's update? Yes, Claire?
Is the post-secondary being moved, or just Strive from the Coxville?
So, we are able to relocate post-secondary within the ASD, so they're currently planned to stay where they are for the remainder of this year, but we... The space limitations on what's available there in terms of the work that they need to do will force just Strive to move.
Shannon?
I'm just curious which campus of the Boys and Girls Club they'll be based at, and would they become members? Like, will that be a reciprocal opportunity?
I don't know about the membership. In fact, that's something interesting. We're going to be at... It's Boys and Girls Club South on... Oh, God, the name of the street.
Ledger.
Thank you, Ledger Street. And, as I said, yeah, it's... We did our professional learning there, the beginning of this school year. Just an absolutely beautiful facility, and very excited about their willingness to support us and possibly future potential.
Other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Now, moving on to staff reports and board discussions, where we shall receive the multi-year enrollment projections. And so we welcome Ms. Liz Hewitt to the table to enlighten us with information to share.
As Liz cues this up, I'll just throw some thanks her way. As you all know, this is an annual report that Liz helps to prepare and is an important factor in terms of our long-term budget planning, as well as, you know, our capital improvements and looking at space. So, very grateful to Liz for the work that she puts into this. And with that, I'll turn it right over to Liz.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity tonight to discuss our multi-year enrollment projections with you. The report, if you'd like to look at it in our book, is on page three of your board book. So, as you all know, student enrollment is a key factor in determining our classroom sections, our class size, our staffing levels, our facility needs, and, important during this budget season, our resource funding. We estimate student enrollment for the upcoming year to inform our budget discussions and our staffing needs, but we also prepare multi-year enrollment projections for long-term planning and facility needs. There we go. Can we see that? So, the graph that you see here depicts 35 years of in-district K-12 enrollment for West Hartford Public Schools. As you can see, in the 8990 school year, enrollment was 7,411 students. And we experienced growth each year until we hit a peak of over 10,000 students in school year 2010-2011. And during this time, our focus really was on facility and space needs as we were quickly outgrowing our space. Since that peak, we've experienced a gradual decline, almost every year, to 8,686 K-12 in-district students in the current year. And you can see that's the... The current year is the last part where there is no shading. As we look ahead into the shaded area and the upcoming 10 years, our overall enrollment is really expected to vary by no more than 200 students in any of the years presented. You can kind of see there's a slight increase over the next few years, and then a gradual decline in the out-years. So, this is our third year using the predictive enrollment analytics module, which is a component of Power School, our student information system. Prior to using this, we did the analysis in-house that focused primarily on birth rates, as well as cohort survival. And that method served us well, but we really felt we were able to leverage the information in our Power School system to take a different look at enrollment. We've been happy with the results, and as I said, this is our third year now using this system. This methodology focuses on three major factors to project enrollment. Our kindergarten enrollment trends, changes in our grade-level cohorts of students as they move each year through the system, and changes in the number of residential units in the district. So, as I said, the first factor is kindergarten enrollment. So, our kindergarten enrollment has been a bit erratic over the past several years. First, it was because of the pandemic and the impact that we saw from that. You may recall that in the fall of 2020, we had a very small kindergarten class. There were about 584 students, as parents decided to hold their children out of kindergarten because they weren't quite sure what was happening with the pandemic. And that was the year that we had both in-person and remote learning, and some parents just weren't comfortable sending their students that year. So, in 2021, our kindergarten enrollment jumped up to 634. So, that was a pretty big increase, 50 students in one year. And what it really was, was kind of all the catch-up from the parents who decided not to send their children the year before. In 2022, we had a kind of more typical year of about 603 students. In 2023, the housing market hit us a little bit, and so we bumped up to 627. And in the current year, we had the change in the kindergarten age legislation. So, it used to be that if your child turned one, or turned five, rather, before January 1st, they were kindergarten-age eligible. Now, it's September 1st. So, as we look at these percentages, what they're saying in the top chart is really, what is our kindergarten class this year as a percent of what it was last year? Typically, we see that, you know, in the high 90s, right around 100%, but you can see we really have quite the variation there. It makes projecting a little bit more difficult when you have that variance, but it's certainly taken into account as we come up with our numbers. The second thing that you see here is the incoming kindergarten class compared to the graduating senior class. And what that's trying to project is, on an overall basis, what is happening to our enrollment, K-12. And again, you see some variation here. I would say, in general, we have been in the high 80s, but again, we see a little bit of a variance here based on some of the factors that I've just spoken about, particularly with 2023, with the kindergarten class coming in at 82% of the graduating seniors. It's a result of the change in the kindergarten age legislation. So, just to put some numbers to that, in 2324, our grade 12, so students who are graduating, was 701 students, but our kindergarten class this year is only 577 students, or 82% of the graduating class. I expect this number to come back next year, but I think we will continue to see a gradual decline, as evidenced by the overall enrollment trend that we saw in one of our first graphs. So, our next slide has a problem loading. So, I don't know what you do with that. Anne is going to be our technical expert, since this is her computer today. Awesome. Thank you, Anne. And here we go. I appreciate it. So, our next slide details our district's grade-level cohort, which is just another way to express what happens to a certain group of students as they progress through each grade. So, in general, we would expect that that would stay pretty consistent year to year. You know, about 100% kids would come in kindergarten, stay with the same elementary school, et cetera. Typically, we see at the lower grade levels, when they're in elementary, an increasing enrollment each year. You know, we add a few students to the cohort. And then when you get to the high school level, we see a decreasing as students choose perhaps to go to a technical school, or a magnet school, or a private school. The years where we generally see bigger variances are the transition years. So typically, from kindergarten to first grade, you might see a bigger increase. As you see here, from fifth to sixth grade, we're at 98%, so that's a time when students perhaps go to a parochial school, a private school. And then we look at eighth to ninth grade, when they move from middle school to high school, and you'll see that many of them come back to the public school. The third factor that we look at is residential development. So, as we all know, there is a lot of development going on in town, and so we worked with Todd Jumeir, who's our town planner, to look at the impact of the 11 ongoing projects related to residential development. The projects that are in place right now propose adding 89 single-family attached units and 1,137 multifamily units, for a total of 1,226 new units, new housing units over the next 10 years. I did want to mention that there was a typo in your report, so these are the correct figures, if you want to note those. So, 89 single-family attached and 1,137 multifamily units. It is estimated that these new developments, with the families that move in and their families, will add between 60 to 85 students per year for the next few years. So, from a perspective standpoint, you know, that's 60 to 85 students over 13 grades over 16 schools. So, again, we certainly are happy about the development, but at this point in time, based on the composition of the development we're seeing, we are not expecting a significant impact on our enrollment. So, as we look at those factors, we come up with our enrollment projections. And you'll see here that there are two trend lines, a conservative trend line and a moderate trend line, which assume different rates of residential development. So, certainly, when developers come to the Town Council or to the Planning Commission and propose their project, they have a set timeframe. Often, that changes, and so the work that we do kind of has two different timeframes to see what the impact will be on our enrollment. The reality is, we'll probably end up somewhere in between there. So, you know, the top line, where we have a higher enrollment, is if things happen on schedule, you know, everything kind of comes in, be more moderate. But the reality is, there are delays, and so we'll see a more conservative or a more moderated enrollment change, and that will grow over time. And I guess, just to clarify, as you're looking at this, our elementary is depicted in red. The blue is our high school projections, and the green is our middle school projections over this 10-year period. So, as we look at our actual forecasted enrollment by grade level, you can see here the actual enrollment for the current year, 2425, as I mentioned earlier, is 8,686 students broken out at the levels, as you can see there. By the 2930 year, we expect that there will be a slight increase, approximately 8,800 students. But based on the information we have now, we expect that to drop down to about 8,500 by the 3435 school year. Certainly, as you get further out, it's more difficult to project some of the things that I talked about, such as residential development, and that kind of builds on itself. So, if some of that comes in a little bit quicker, you're kind of starting with a bigger base, and so there is the impact on that, on the outer years. Likewise, if some of it either doesn't come to fruition or comes in a little more slowly, we may see a more tapered effect there. Certainly, when we look at our facility needs, at this point, we have no capacity issues or space issues for any of our standard classrooms at any of our schools. Certainly, you know, we do have rooms that are used for other things, and it is always... Things are always tight, but we have no capacity issues for standard classrooms, as we did during the time when we were seeing enrollment growth year over year. So, that was a quick walkthrough of it. I think, you know, this year, really, things are... There isn't a lot of information. It's a pretty gradual rise, a very gradual decrease, and I feel confident that we're poised to handle that. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, any detailed questions or information that I could provide.
All right, thank you so very much. Teammates, questions, comments? Yes, Gail?
Thank you for the presentation. Yeah, when I saw that number in there, 2,563, you know, I couldn't understand how it's possible that we're not going to have an increased amount of students with that amount of additional dwellings. But I... Even with the revised number that you gave us, it's really hard to understand how we would not be increasing the number of students substantially, particularly given that housing is, you know, quite expensive and families are having trouble even buying houses. And I believe that most of these are rental units. So, it would seem to me, I mean, and I'm just curious how you get to that, that we are not going to have a substantial number of increased students with the amount of building.
So, what we look at is the total number of students, or I'm sorry, the total number of new residential developments, the years over which those will be added on to our inventory, and then a factor as to historically, and not just here, but, you know, across the nation, what type of student enrollment you get from different types of dwellings. So, you can imagine, if you have a single-family home, it is more likely that it will be a family that may have school-aged children and will add to the enrollment. The projects that are currently in the works and that are pending, as I said, there are 89 single-family attached, which either means a condo, duplex, a townhouse, or something of that nature. And so, the rate that we use is that for every one of those dwellings, we will receive .37 students across all grades. So, you know, with that type of housing, typically, it's basically a third of a student per unit. When we look at the multifamily units, there are a little over 1,100 of those, and the factor that's used typically is .3 students per unit. And again, when we look at these 1,200 units, they are over a 10-year period. So, you know, when we look, for example, in the upcoming year, depending on, you know, a moderate scenario where everything is on track, they're projecting that only 240 of those would actually be coming online, and people would move into them. So, if you look at 240 units with .3 students per unit, you end up with about 65 students being added. Now, you know, as we have more experience, we'll be able to really see what happens. I agree that with housing prices, you know, being high, and a lot of families perhaps renting instead of buying a home, we may see a little higher than that, but with the developments that have already come online, our experience has been pretty consistent with the national trends. So, I do agree, it's a lot of development, and we'll certainly be watching it very carefully. But so far, this is what we've seen happen.
Jason?
So, my recollection of this presentation from last year is that the program capabilities doesn't extend to or get to the granularity of what this means for individual schools. Is that correct?
That is correct. Now, certainly, we know the physical location of these projects, but, you know, when we're looking at an overall factor of how many students per unit, you know, it's spread across the elementary, the middle, the high school, and so it does get very difficult to really see an immediate impact or direct impact on a particular school.
Claire? Claire.
I realize that pre-K is not mandated by the state and probably isn't in this formula. But do you see a trend of pre-K seats in the district? Or is there any work done towards that change over time?
So our pre-K seats and our regular pre-K program, we have nine classrooms, which equates to 144 students. And so because we set that number based on the number of programs we have, we don't see increased enrollment there. We did recently, or we're in the process of going through the magnet school lottery process and looking at the number of applications for those seats. And certainly, the need is consistent. But I did not see any kind of a significant growth in the number of families who applied for pre-K this year. It's pretty consistent with what I've seen in prior years.
Other questions or comments? Ethan.
So the one thing that stood out from change is the elementary school, where it drops off pretty substantially, certainly in the non-conservative, I forget which is which, but yeah. Is there a reason for that? Or is that just a way of the general population?
Well, I think what we're seeing, you know, certainly, I don't know if there was a particular chart that you were looking at or if it was just one slide. What we're seeing each year is that as our graduating class falls off, it's replaced by a smaller incoming kindergarten class. And so what I think you're seeing is the cumulative effect of that as we keep having smaller classes come in. Now, keep in mind as well that in the current kindergarten class is smaller because of the legislation change in kindergarten age. And we expect that that cohort is going to stay small all the way through, you know, its elementary years. And so that is affecting that number a bit as well.
Basically, the historical trend.
It is the historical trend. And I think that the changes that we see tend to start at the kindergarten, at the elementary level, and then really work their way through the rest of the district.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Shannon.
I'm just curious with respect to the developments, since they seem to be highly concentrated in the center area. Is there a way to see which schools they would, those bigger developments would each be districted to? Because it might be part of a conversation around, we're hearing all these kind of crunching on enrollment and if it's going to get worse because of the location of some of those developments. I'm wondering, at what point does it reach a threshold to think about redistricting relative to those locations?
So certainly, as I said, we do know where each of them are located. We have a district map, which shows all of the elementary, middle school, and high school dividing lines or neighborhood lines. And when Power School looks at our projection, they do drill down to a, you know, to a school level. So we do have that data. We just find that when you're drilling down to that level, it's not as accurate as an overall level. But yes, particularly as some of these developments come online, we're starting to see the impact of them. I think we'll be better able to predict if they'll have an impact on a particular, most likely, elementary school. I think the middle schools and the high schools will be fine, but the elementary schools themselves.
Other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you so very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience with my technical issue. We are good to go.
Oh, no, we saw it as a versatility. You were able to just go with the flow, so it worked well. Thank you so much. Thank you. And now moving on to early childhood play-based learning, where we have other teammates coming to the table to share. But I will pass the baton to Superintendent Vicines to carry us through.
Absolutely. So as the team gets set up, and I'll give them a moment to get their pieces in place. But you may recall, there was a question that had come from the board. I apologize, I don't recall exactly who had asked. But with the passing of legislation related to play-based learning, there was a question as to how is West Hartford approaching this? What are we doing with that? So I spoke with Anne, and she certainly enlisted. I believe you all know Melissa Barans, who has taken over as our Director of Elementary Education. And I hope that you will remember Irene Garnot, who is our Department Supervisor for Early Childhood Education. And, you know, a lot of this falls squarely in Irene's area of focus. And I'm very excited to have them present because we're doing some very phenomenal things with play-based learning that really stimulate critical thinking, problem solving, communication, collaboration, all of the pieces of our vision of the graduate at a very young age. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anne and the team and ask them to share what they have.
Hello, it's nice to be here with you tonight discussing play-based learning for pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students. As Paul said, I'm really happy to be joined by Irene and Melissa. And I will just start us off, and I'm really going to turn it over to them. Just for some background, the State of Connecticut General Assembly passed Public Act 2302 in July of 2023. And this was an act that, among other things, recognizes the essential role of play in early childhood education and required schools to include play as part of that. That law had three important pieces, that play be incorporated and integrated into daily practice, that it allows students to meet, that it allows the students, needs to be met through both free play, guided play, and games, and predominantly not going to be using mobile devices or electronic devices. So we were ahead of the game in many ways when it came to this work because of Irene and our Early Childhood Team's early work. But I'm going to turn it over to Melissa to continue.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Building upon the strong play-based practices already implemented in pre-K, during the 2022-23 school year, our two magnet schools, so Charter Oak International Academy and Smith STEM School, piloted a push-up model where they incorporated purposeful play into their kindergarten classrooms. We learned a great deal from this pilot as it was implemented in the academic blocks, which poised us very well for when the legislation passed in July of 2023 to roll out play-based learning across our elementary schools. So now in kindergarten, play-based learning is implemented in every kindergarten classroom, embedded daily into the academic blocks. Explicit instruction is balanced with the application of skills and concepts through play. And Irene will talk a little bit more about what this looks like in practice.
Hi, it's great to be back. Last time I was here, I talked a little bit about preschool, which sets the foundation for our wonderful play-based kindergarten practice. So in kindergarten, by balancing structured instruction and meaningful play, West Hartford Public Schools supports the whole child academically, socially, and emotionally, helping students build a strong foundation for future learning. When we consider equity, play is the great equalizer. All students can access play regardless of their language proficiency, regardless of developmental stage or ability level. Children find joy and a sense of belonging in a playful classroom. Research also shows us that play develops empathy and understanding of others, and that supports their social-emotional learning as well. A well-done play-based classroom is really a two-way street where teachers infuse curricular content into play and play experiences are found within instruction. Teachers take an active role as side-by-side learners and co-constructors of knowledge. You'll hear us talk a lot tonight about a both-and approach. So our goal is to provide a balanced learning experience that includes teacher-directed instruction and student-led exploration. This both-and approach ensures that students receive explicit instruction in foundational literacy and math skills while also applying their learning, their new learning, through play. Current curriculum and learning standards remain. Don't worry, we are not throwing reading out the door. We still teach children to read, write, and learn about math and science. But in a play-based classroom, instead of or in addition to a traditional literacy station, for example, we may see children creating signage or props for a dramatic play center, creating menus, shopping lists, making signs for the post office or the pet shop, really whatever they decide that they want to be playing in. They apply these skills to authentic and meaningful writing that is interesting to them, thus increasing their engagement and their joy. This visual is one that we use quite a bit with our teachers. It is from the crisis in kindergarten. And it does a nice job of showing a continuum of instruction from free play, which there are places for, right, recess? Children need to kind of figure those things out and navigate, make their own rules, all the way to direct instruction, which is a more traditional model that we have seen in the past. The pendulum is now swinging back to center, embracing a balance of foundational literacy and math instruction and play-based learning, where young children have the opportunity to participate in highly engaging, developmentally appropriate experiences. The big takeaway here is intentionality. And that's what we talk to our teachers a lot about. It is not just free play, or as I like to say, run amok, amok, amok. It is carefully designed and thoughtfully planned. Using children's interests, learning standards, and curricular connections, teachers craft play-based experiences that meet the needs of the whole child. So professional development. So some of our teachers came to the table with a pretty deep knowledge of play-based learning. Some did not. So how do we get everyone together? And implementing a play-based approach requires reflective and collaborative teacher planning. Professional conversations and shared planning time help teachers balance that structured instruction with play-based instruction, ensuring that both are mutually reinforcing to each other. Reflection is essential in lesson design and assessing play-based learning. It's in alignment with academic standards. Teachers need time to do this work thoughtfully and effectively. Through our professional development in the past two years, teachers have had access to in-house teacher videos, allowing them to see each other in action. Those are included in your board report. And if you have the links to those, you can view them. We'll see one in a minute. They have shared documents, resource texts that they have done book studies on together. And they have each other as they build their competence and confidence in implementing a play-based approach. Following the lead of students requires flexibility and nuance, making decisions in the moment to support students' ideas and questions that they have about their world. There is no script for this work. There is no box of curriculum that you can pull out. Teachers use their deep understanding of the standards and child development to support and scaffold learning during these hands-on and authentic experiences. The current ELA curriculum offers space and provocations for play that is connected to the learning standards. Slow and steady wins the race. It also leads to lasting success. Teachers have the opportunity to gradually implement elements of play-based learning into their practice, ensuring a deep understanding and a strong foundation. Our goal is to foster meaningful growth rather than rushing to a less effective implementation. So now the fun part. What does it look like? And we know, and I know as a learner, some of the most effective PD for teachers is to go visit one another and observe. This can be a little tricky when we think about an entire kindergarten grade level across 11 elementary schools. So earlier, I mentioned some videos created by current West Hartford teachers with the help of Craig Diamond. I always like to give him a nice shout-out and his video magic. Teachers have the opportunity that way to see purposeful play in action. We want to share one example with you and the community tonight. Oh, we're loading. And we're loading. I hope it loads, because he's really cute, this little guy. I'm going to close this and try again. Okay. All right, let's try one more time. Come on, baby. Turn it off, will you? Yeah, disconnect, reconnect. And not connect. Maybe try it one more time. This is such a good video. It really is. Well, the highlights include some teacher interviews as well as student interviews around a structure that we call block teams. Part of our pilot teams at Charter Oak engaged in some outside PD and learned about block teams where children spend a week. They commit, four children in each class commit to a whole week of engaging in block play, where they select a different important building, whether in their own community or it might be in a country that represents someone from their class or just something interesting. This week, one of our kindergarten classrooms at Charter Oak, they built Howard University, including many, many details. The video in that's on that slide, so that's Howard University. In the video, they built the Guggenheim Museum. And you can hear children giving their, like, the docents, right, of the block team. So they spend the week building, they add details, they draw plans, they count how many windows what they need. They created the Luxembourg Palace. They noticed that there was portraits all over the Luxembourg Palace. So they went into the art area and they painted little mini portraits and hung them in and created gardens, right? So they really study these different buildings and structures. And the best part is when the children are talking about it and how articulate they are. At the end of the week, they invite preschool students or other kindergartners in. They tell them all about it. The other children get to ask questions. And then they pack up. And as they pack up, they're sorting blocks by shape. They put them in stacks of 10. Teachers know that the standard in kindergarten is being able to count by 10. So they're counting all their blocks. Luckily, all the structures have over 100 blocks in them. And if we get this working, you'll get to see it all again after my highlight reel. All right, pretend like I didn't see it.
We get to build structures that we haven't seen before. And we get to do it like a construction worker.
Our block teams are four kids each week. They get to pick a building that they're going to build.
Today, we will decide what building we are going to make, and we will draw it. If we have time, we can start the building process too.
We'll have to agree on that. We have the little books, and they help us decide what to build.
You know French?
No, let's see what's on the left.
It's over 2,600 feet tall.
We might need another piece.
We write what it looks like, and then we build it.
And with the buildings, a lot of it is vocabulary. So we have a lot of ESOL students. So that's where, like, I can be there supporting those students, scaffolding their learning while they are in the area.
The importance of it is talking about architecture, talking about important buildings. Why do you go to a museum? You know, what do you explore there? So it's great with history and why some of these buildings are crumbled in these books that they're looking at.
You'll find, like, sometimes they'll be working together and other times they'll just, like, all go apart. I'm like, okay, let's come together. We're working together on one thing that we're all doing. So they really need to collaborate, listen to each other.
And then we do details, and then we show it off to people.
We try and find pictures. If it's somewhere they haven't been, we find pictures so that they can then really think about other details that they need to add.
Art is hard, because they want the art.
It starts at the very beginning of the school year. We teach them how to use the blocks. The blocks are not for throwing. You have to be very careful with them. You have to be very purposeful with them. It's a lot about building relationships with your students. Like, I like to get to know each of my students for who they are and what they like to do. This morning, for Luxembourg Palace, we were looking at some of the pictures. We noticed that there were some portraits on walls inside the palace. So the kids started making portraits. So then some other kids, they had seen the garden. So then they started, you can see, they started making some landscapes. Because you give them that choice at the beginning of the year, and it's more open-ended, they learn to go with it where they want. But because you set up those behavioral expectations in the classroom, these are how you use the materials, they pretty much do whatever they want with them because they know the boundaries.
On Friday, typically, we will go for tours. So we'll go get the pre-K friends. They will come down to our classroom. The kids can describe what building it is, why the building is important. why the building is important, what goes on inside the building, how they work together, what kind of blocks they use, what kind of details they added. So they can really explain their process behind what they did. The communication that goes on with it is huge.
Tell the friends what you built this week.
A Guggenheim Museum.
Guggenheim Museum?
The Guggenheim Museum. This is our home.
We made Luxembourg Palace. We made a water chamber. We made the auditorium in the middle. We had people.
At the end of that, we sort them all out by shape. We count them to see how many blocks we used. They go one block at a time. So first, they will take down some of the details that they've added and put the details away. The details are not included in our count. One of our standards is counting to 100. All of our block builds have had more than 100 blocks. One of our standards is counting by tens. So the blocks are purposefully put together in stacks of 10. When I first started it, I was building them in stacks of five because it was just easier. And I'm like, it doesn't have to be easy. Things can be difficult for kindergartners.
I love it. It just gives the block area a bigger, better focus.
Blocks used to be more like, they're just doing like whatever they want. Like here, there's more purpose behind it. There's so many things that you can pull in. And sometimes you don't really know what you're pulling in until it actually happens. So if you know the standards in kindergarten, it's so easy to pull it in. So like they're writing and they're looking at words and they'll be noticing, oh, my goodness, there's like a diagram in this building that we're making. There's a short vowel in this word that we're writing. When they're adding labels, they're sounding out the words that they're trying, I'm not there doing it for them. It's like all those skills that you've taught them throughout the year that they are bringing into their block team. And they just really enjoy it. It's just very cool.
I'm really glad the video worked because that was so much more eloquent than I could explain it. And you can see that there's a great deal of intentionality and transdisciplinary learning that's happening there, all in the context of a joyful classroom.
I think our students are a little jealous of kindergarten right now. Although the youngest learners are many, many, many years away from graduation. Oh, sorry.
We're going to have to figure it out.
Back to my presentation, back to our presentation. Updates required. Lots of things going on here. Although our youngest learners are many years away from graduation, these play-based learning experiences allow them to practice the foundational elements the district aspires to see in our graduates. And I think as you watch that video, you might have seen a little bit of collaboration. You might have seen a little bit of respect for self and others, curiosity and love of learning, determination and self-efficacy, problem-solving, creativity, critical thinking, effective communication. These are all the things that make up our vision of the graduate. So these youngest learners are practicing right from the beginning of kindergarten. And by fostering a physically and emotionally safe environment rooted in genuine relationships, enriched with these authentic hands-on experiences, we aim to instill lifelong learning that will carry our students through their educational journey and beyond. And although the block, the block video is beautiful, there's others and they're in your package. I encourage you to look at them. The links are for others because it's not just about one approach. Play-based learning is a much larger approach and there are many ways to achieve that. So with that, we welcome any of your questions.
Oh, my. Thank you so very much. Teammates, questions, comments? Yes, Jason?
So I'm really glad you got the video too because I had the very great pleasure of at least 10 school visits over the course of the fall. And one of my great joys was watching the kids and getting in classrooms and watching them do the building, but more importantly, talk about it and the sense of pride that they really had and what they were doing. And the level of sophistication is, as you can see, is pretty cool. I don't know that my kids at that ed five knew what the Guggenheim was. So very impressive. The other, and no question, just two comments. So that was the first comment. The other one is it is impressive as doing those visits, seeing how this foundation actually carries through to the idea of the student-led classrooms, the student-led teaching, where you have to collaborate, you have to problem solve together. And so having that foundation in pre-K and in kindergarten and then on up, you can really see how that does fulfill the vision of the graduate. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Gail?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. You know, I was really excited to hear about this because, I mean, there's a lot of research coming out now that's showing that, that we've sort of given up this play-based education and given our kids basically an electronic-based education. So this presentation and this idea was really kind of intriguing to me. And I think that some of the downsides of that switch has been a lot of problems with kids in terms of anxiety and depression. So my question is, do you mirror anything like this beyond kindergarten?
Sure. What I can say is the law actually requires play-based instruction in pre-K and kindergarten. And I believe it reads, and teachers cannot be penalized, something like that, for play-based instruction in first through fifth grade. So it's opening a door for more inquiry and play-based instruction in the older grades. I know at Smith and at Charter Oak, because their philosophy is an inquiry-based philosophy, that inquiry, and it might not look like dramatic play, but it could be productive struggle, kind of messing around with things and figuring things out is an approach that is used through fifth grade. And, you know, I would welcome the opportunity to continue to push up. Sorry, inquiry, inquiry-based. Sorry.
We avoid the anger-based.
Sometimes there's a little anger, but...
I would also add that student-centered learning of all kinds is important in all of our, all of our grades from K through 12. So we encourage teachers at all times and within our curriculum as well to look at student-centered instruction. A really good example of that that has been growing in the district is what we call BTC. Oh, Building Thinking Classrooms. Excuse me, the acronym escaped me, which is, is an approach to teaching. This has started in the area of math but has gained increased interest in other areas where if you think of a math classroom where students are having the teacher review most of the work at the board and possibly sitting at their desk, either with a partner or listening to the teacher, writing down, solving problems on their own. This is an approach where we have groups of students working together at whiteboards around the room, solving specific problems and explaining their thinking to others following a specific approach of how to engage in really a strong dialogue. One example of that is the child who is writing is not the one speaking. So the one who's talking to them about how to solve the problem, the one holding the pen and doing the work is listening to their colleague. And then the other person is helping to add other ideas or explain why we would be doing that. And then those children can turn around and explain to the classroom. So those are, those student-centered approaches all know, not always play, are really a foundation of the whole K-12 approach.
And if I may, I wanted to piggyback one thing. Claire, Claire had asked a similar question to me just prior to the meeting about, you know, how does this scale up? And as I was watching the presentation, I was thinking about her question. I recently had the opportunity to sit down with one of the curriculum specialists that works in Ann's office, who has been out, and I think it's important because this will also help clarify some of the, some of the concerns we heard regarding, you know, central office-type positions. Because this person is out in our schools and has been doing a lot of the lift relative to supporting computer science, specifically at Smith STEM School, where, you know, we did have that cut, but we've promised and delivered on a promise to help infuse support directly into that school. Smith is a pilot for some of our computer science. The students, I'm recounting a very specific example about a fourth-grade class where they were working with Scratch and they were working with some, and I've forgotten some of the Gee Whiz names of the small robot pieces that are the precursors for programming and get the students involved. It's a, it's a board update that we're, you know, we just started talking about planning to be able to really show off because to me, it speaks to that student-centered classroom. There's an element of structured play in the same way that Irene has supported this within pre-K and K. And Irene's another person that lives in our budget. Theoretically, as a central office person, although she will tell you, she does not have an office here at Central Office. And every pre-K student, and I would imagine the majority of kindergarten students know her by name, by sight, based on the work that these folks are doing, directly infused into the classroom setting. And I, and I think that's an important clarification to provide because I know that the general public doesn't know that. I know that our, you know, our parents know our teachers' names and they don't necessarily know the inner workings of how the rest of that works. But, you know, when, when a number like 34 or something is thrown out, that, that's inclusive of the, of the secretarial staff and a number of folks that are, that, you know, I don't want there to be a missed impression because the work that you saw on that video would not be possible without a person like Irene, who's, who's rolling up her sleeves and doing hands-on work with our teachers and our students in the classroom on a daily basis. And I'm just, I'm grateful to her and I'm grateful to all of the teachers that you saw and the many more that you didn't because they're just knocking it out of the park. And I'm so excited for the work that's been undertaken.
Thank you for the kind words. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the names of the teachers that were featured. So Rebecca Boyce and Rachel Burnett, who are both at Charter Oak. They did a great job.
Claire?
Yeah. So thank you so much. It's great to see the video. It's sometimes hard to understand if you haven't seen it in action. So it's nice to see that. The Connecticut mandate does include adding play-based learning to the other grades. It is mandated for the pre-K, K. But it's so effective in the upper grades. And games like Biz Buzz or even doing Pi Day or Kids Lit Quiz lets your non-typical kids really excel. And we had some students that we had no idea they were such a champion with some of the numbers games. And their whole status and feeling of being part of the class was raised up with these games because play does pass all the disabilities. It takes away the language barriers and it's just fun. And so I hope that we do more PD and help other teachers know that that math game once a week can be the highlight of some student's school week. And, you know, kids still like to play even when they get out of that grade. I also wonder if any of our kids with pre-K experience in play-based learning are coming into kindergarten with more of a mentor role because some of our kindergartners have not had prior play-based learning. And then our pre-K kids, even our early learning-centered children that might have disabilities, they've got an edge up on play-based learning.
They do. And kindergarten teachers will tell me every fall they know exactly who had pre-K within the district and who didn't.
Other questions or comments? Latoya?
I just had a comment about, I know we're talking about early, our early childhood play-based. But one of the things that I thought about when I was touring the schools and thinking about again tonight is, and I know this isn't the legislation, but want to certainly encourage us as a district is, you see kind of a little bit of a drop-off when the kids start to go to middle school and high school. And I feel like the play, the opportunities for play and the social, emotional learning become almost like you have to opt in. It's like an option, you know, to go talk to someone or to sign up for an after-school club to, you know, kind of engage in that. And so just thinking about like how we have such a high bar for rigor and academics and being, you know, so competitive in our high schools, which is something that attracts families. I think, thinking about how to infuse the fun part because I feel like when our kids are getting to high school, it's very high-pressure, high-stakes, high-stress, almost like they're already in college. And I even kind of feel like college is a little like less stressful than being a high schooler in a district like this, like where academic rigor is like, you see, they're nodding. And so I think the grades are good, but the overall well-being of our students is everything. And you see straight-A students at Ivy League schools having nervous breakdowns and not even able to complete their degrees. And so I think just we, I want us to be reflective about that and about not the drop-off. Just maybe it's not a drop-off, like just really thinking about how do we continue, you know, that stuff on in middle school and high school? Our elementary schools look so colorful, all the beautiful SEL language, all this stuff. And it's like, almost like as we go up in grades, it just changes. And it's like, they need that stuff more than ever. 14, 15, and 16-year-olds need to play. If you ask them right now, like, would y'all like to play a game? Like, most of them are going to say, yeah. And so I think, I just, it's just something I want us to think about and like just kind of consider because I think we have the tools to, to keep that more consistent as the kids grow. So thank you.
Other comments? Questions? All right. Thank you so much for your presentation. And I think to dovetail a bit off of Latoya's piece, what I'm so impressed with seeing the video and hearing you all describe and seeing those young people with such confidence talk about what they're doing and to engage with one another and collaborate. And even if they didn't have the answer, they didn't give up. They worked together to solve the answer. And I think having those opportunities to build that solid foundation of self-confidence and motivation early on will help them as they continue to grow and learn in different settings. So thank you so very much for all that you're doing. And I do have to say, oh, my, watching the video, I saw someone, I'm not going to get choked up, but who helped teach my babies. And it took everything in me not to just break down into tears. So please tell Ms. V I said hello and I'm giving her a big hug. What a blessing, what a blessing. So thank you all so very much for all that you're doing.
And I do encourage you, if you have a minute, click on the other ones because they're just as good.
Excellent. Thank you. And as we transition, we shall move on to routine matters where we have approval of the minutes. Seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of March the 4th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Latoya. Any discussion or suggested edits? Seeing none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, any abstain? The ayes have it. Moving on to information and reports. Board members, do we have any communications and reports from other organizations or boards? Seeing none, any other information or discussions? Seeing none, moving on to future business. Announcement of future meeting dates. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, March 26, 2025. Board of Education Public Hearing at 7:00, followed by Board Workshop Number Two here at the Town Hall in Legislative Chambers, Room 314. Then on, I'm going to also reference our listening sessions. Then on Monday, March 31st, at 8:45 a.m. at Faxon Library, we'll have our Town Council Board of Ed Listening Session. And that same day in the evening, March 31st, at 6:00 p.m. at Noah Webster Library, our third and final listening session, again with our Town Council teammates and Board of Ed members. And then on Tuesday, April 1st, 2025, our regular Board of Education meeting where we have adoption of the superintendent's 2024-2025 budget at 7:00 here at the Town Hall, Room 314. And then Tuesday, May 6, 2025, a regular Board of Education meeting, 7:00 here at the Town Hall, Room 314. Do we have a request for any future agenda items? Seeing none, do we have any persons that would like to make a public communication? Seeing none, we do not have an executive session, therefore seeking a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Shannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ethan. Meeting adjourned.